On October 16, 2013, this meeting of the Planning Board is called to order.
And I, at the same time, 10 after 7, we will be, the Hingham Development Industrial Commission meeting will also be called to order. For those who are not familiar with the proceedings, we are meeting jointly tonight to discuss the economic development aspect of the master plan, of the Hingham master plan, as it's been in the past, and as we are moving forward, we're doing updates to the plan, and we're, tonight, what we're doing is we're discussing, more than anything, what's happened in the past, what we still have ongoing from the last go-round with the plan, and suggestions from both the Planning and the HDIC on where we should go moving forward. The Planning Board has their nameplates in front of them, as they usually do, but I don't know if we want to introduce, to do that going forward. So, Mary, do we want to start with you?
I'm Mary Savage Dunham. I'm staff to the Planning Board.
I'm Judy Sneath, and I'm on the Planning Board.
I'm Bill Ramsey. I'm the chairman of the Planning Board.
Sue Sullivan, chairman of the HDIC.
Kevin Ellis, member of HDIC.
Nanette Walsh, member HDIC.
Eileen Richards, member HDIC.
Greg Lane, member HDIC.
So, thank you. And as we move forward, the first thing we're going to do is take a look, if everyone here has in front of them, these are the economic development sections from the last, from the master plan that we've been working off of, and we're just going to take a quick look. Bill, do you want to go down them? How do you want to do it? You want to just?
Do you want to just go down line item by line item? So, do you want to start with, well, the email you previously sent with the outlined agenda, I thought was a good starting point. Do you want to just go in accordance with that?
So, let's do that. So, what we're going to do is, we're going to take areas of town, so we'll skip around on these sheets as we do it, but we're going to take areas of town where we've been over the last several years and where we're going. We're going to start off with Hingham Square, which we will find in Section 2 for a lot of it, is right, is in that area of our packet here. If you remember, in the last go-round of the master plan, we were in the throes of Green Bush construction. Hingham Downtown had been, you know, dismantled and was in the process, and in many facets had been rebuilt at this point, but still, there was a lot of ongoing activity. The downtown has been, for the most part, completely reconstructed, and as we look here, one of the things we wanted to do was increase parking at the Station Street Lot. That's been completed. It was reconfigured in 2007. Mary, am I right in this, that when I see "complete," it was complete after the last master plan was done?
Right. This table was updated by Katie Lacy before she left, and I've been working on updating it. And for everyone's reference, these are specific recommendations from the last master plan. So, a portion of the dialogue, which I'm hoping for the board to have tonight, is, for these specific areas of town, which of these recommendations that weren't done may still be valid. Some of them, maybe the world has changed and they're not valid anymore, and I suspect that you may have other items to put onto the list. So, where do we go from here? This is where we were after the last plan. Some of the work's been done, some of it hasn't. How do we move forward, and what are your goals and thoughts and initiatives for different parts of the town?
Okay. So, Bill, do you want to go down the list? Do you want me to go down the list? How do you want to do it?
Sure. I can go down the list, starting on Section 2. So, the next item on the list would be strengthening the link between the square and Upper North Street by encouraging retail and small professional offices. It looks like a future need. It would be a North Street 3A crosswalk improvements with what we currently have down there.
So, maybe we can talk a little bit about that, since we're on that section now, that since our last recommendation of strengthening that link between the square and Upper North Street, much has been done. We had a 2005 downtown master plan that was done by the Cecil Group, and then we also had the P-Wed grant for the reconstruction following the Green Bush construction. We had the 2004 ATM Article 24 that created the downtown overlay district and required limited design review, and in 2011, we had Upper North Streets, Streetscape improvements that were completed. I would, HDIC has talked a lot recently about, you know, how successful we have been with creating and strengthening that link between the square and Upper North, and I think one of the major issues of concern for us, and certainly important going forward in the master plan recommendations, is the Settles Glass site, which we had significant hopes for in terms of the redevelopment and how that particular property was going to link those two areas. I think that hasn't happened as of yet for a variety of reasons, but I would think going forward, we need to maintain that as a recommendation in order to do that.
What would the recommendation be?
Encourage the redevelopment of the Settles Glass site to provide a link between the two areas, or?
You know, I guess I have a bigger question about the Settles Glass site. I don't want a number on Main Street, and I think it's the corner of Main. And South Street, there's a building that's somewhat of a blight, and there's another one across from the Morgan Theater. So, three pieces of private property that are significant, kind of drains on the vitality of the area. And so, what, you know, what can the town boards do to encourage, short of what?
Do we have any recourse at this time, and/or do we want to recommend that there should be some recourse? I mean, do, you're right, you're right. Right now, we have no ability to push an issue, other than if permits are in place and, you know, what would we, I get your question, what's the recommendation?
Right.
Other than to?
I mean, is there a zoning change that we could put into place that would make it easier to develop those three? Is it zoning that has prevented those properties from being developed? That's not the indication that I see.
I don't think so.
You know?
Does anyone have any thoughts? You know, because of the nature, maybe, of our discussion and all tonight, too, I mean, I think we can also, if anyone from the audience has any, you know, thoughts on anything, because we are, you know, we're not acting, so we are recommending things and all tonight. So, if anybody's?
Well, we could reach out to the owners and see if there's anything else we could do. I do know that, I do believe that the permits on the Settles Glass property is still valid. They've been extended, but one of our recommendations, see if we could help in some way, if we reach out to the owners of those properties and see if the town can be of assistance, or if there's an impediment there that we could assist with, more parking, or additional crosswalks, or something to make it more user-friendly for the developer.
The interesting thing is that we actually, we did a lot of that for that particular site, because it was so important to us back a few years ago, that, in fact, some of our downtown parking regulations have actually been changed, you know, as an accommodation for that site. I guess the question, I think, that Judy's asking is, you know, is there, is there a way we can, in zoning, ensure that properties like that don't go?
Sue, so I think that's an issue that's been obviously on top of mind, that a lot of communities have been going all the way back to the little economic trust there, and a lot of development that was always concerned in early 2000, where there were shopping centers built from the edge of town, what those would do to downtown areas. I guess what I'm suggesting is there are models out there, and maybe we could direct the planning department to kind of identify some tools that have needed to be used successfully. You know, for example, some communities require funds to be put up, and developers go through the process to address issues of blight, which their projects aren't successful. And those are held, and that's one option, but I'm sure there are others. National Trust of Historic Preservation has a number of tools on their website that they use to work with communities like you, to have historic downtown areas that will be under-reserved or being revitalized.
Great. So, is that a clear enough direction for you, Mary, kind of that, in terms of that our recommendation at this time would probably center around seeing what our options are?
For blighted properties?
Mm-hmm.
Is that?
How other towns are effectively dealing with it?
Are you talking, for blighted properties or properties that the developer's bankrupt?
Well, I think the Settles Glass, and that's the one that obviously was a broken development project, correct?
Right.
When someone's going through the application process and investing a lot of our time, our town's time, and planning process time, what do we want to do to assure that they follow through on what their promises say? I think that's, is that my understanding of what kind of part of the problem in that project?
Yes, and I think that the second part is, and I have some recollection, and maybe somebody else can help me on this, is that the ZBA was considering bylaw change that dealt with abandoned properties, and then we were working on a definition for what abandoned was and what would happen, and so, and this had to do with a residential property that they were looking at, but I think the same would apply to the Settles Glass property, to the upper stories of the corner of, you know, so that's not the entire building, but the upper stories of a building, and to that other building is that for, you know, under some definitions of the word abandoned.
Well, you have the other properties, not Main Street, that's across the street.
Right, from Little Orange. Right, and so, by not using something for a certain amount of time, I think you lose certain, do you remember this? I think it was over?
Yes, I do remember. I think it was two years. I mean, if you had, if the property hadn't been occupied after, I think it was two years we were talking about, as a potential zoning change, it would, but I don't remember what the recourse was. I don't know if it would?
Well, it was a loss of some?
Some value to it, or?
Some zoning, a favorable zoning.
Right, right.
Or a grandfathered, I think it was a grandfathered, whatever you were allowed to have by the grandfather, and you were denied if you let the property go for two years. Right, right. So, maybe there's something similar to that, that we could?
Asset border.
Look at as being a way to strengthen people's interests in using their properties rather than abandoning.
I can certainly look into that and have that as a recommendation. One thing that gets tricky from the government side is, if the taxes are all paid in full, it's sometimes hard for the town government to intervene and compel action from the property owner, unless, like your example of if somebody had a permit, you know, then after a certain amount of time, the permit expires, that type of thing, but certainly?
Right, but as far as grandfathered, say, parking spaces, that's a favorable condition bestowed upon the property owner by the town that doesn't necessarily have to happen as a right.
With the Hyde Field Amendment, where that's no longer in play anymore, because you abandoned it.
So, the zoning board was looking at it, but then never, which is kind of?
Yeah, we discussed it as a potential zoning change, but we just never, it was one of those, it was a year we had about three or four zoning changes we were going to address, but that we just decided not to pursue that one this year, and I think there were some other ones that were more pressing at the time.
All right.
That was about, that was about three years ago, I think. I had a question for the HDIC, though. Obviously, the creation of the overlay district downtown was a tool that we, that towns can use to focus on specific areas, and, you know, the last couple of years on the Planning Board, the only one I remember is, we've only had one applicant seeking a waiver. Has the, for future developments, has the HDIC seen that as a good tool, or something that we should focus on different areas of the town possibly going forward?
The one you're talking about, the waiver, Bill, you're talking about a waiver?
The bank.
So, that was, right, of the zoning bylaw to protect the downtown retailers. What Bill's referring to is the zoning law that went through, and I believe it went through in 2009, which was that if you, anything other than a retail space on the first floor, I shouldn't even say retail space, office use on the first floor, and it was detailed, more clearly than that, would require a special permit. And you're right, that's only been, there's been, there's been one waiver requested and granted. As a commission, do we feel that it has been effective in maintaining the retail nature of the?
Yeah, I think so. I think it's prevented some things from happening, right?
It's hard to quantify that, because without having applications for a variance, but as far as we know, it has, it has been, it's worked the way we intended, with the exception of the bank.
I think that the?
Just to make it clear, it's not a waiver or a variance, it's just a special permit.
It's a special permit.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, right. And I think, I think the, if we look at the vacancy rate, and Judy, if you have anything else to add on this and all, but I think if we look at the very low vacancy rate in downtown Hingham on the first floor level, I think that speaks volumes to the effectiveness of the special permit requirement, because what it's allowed us to do is, when a, when a retail establishment has left a property, another retail one has come in, and it hasn't affected, negatively affected, the, you know, there's been no negative effect from the special permit on the vacancy rate, and it was done at the time out of concern that we were going to lose our downtown to become an area of all offices, and, you know, I would absolutely agree that it's been very successful. But as planning, any thoughts?
Did you ask, Bill, if we had any input as to other areas? Is that?
Well, you know, it can be used as a tool in the future for other areas of town, possibly. So, creation of overlay districts are commonly used to spot zoning or areas of future development. So, I was wondering, just the effectiveness of it, and something we could use in the future.
How about apartments on the upper floors? Are we?
That's the next, exactly, and that's, you know, something, you know, HDIC discussed a bit a couple of weeks ago, too. It was, in our last go-round, it was something that we wanted as a priority, we thought, you know, they call it, you know, smart living, smart growth and all, that you have people living and working in the same area. We, the three of us, three of us that were at our last meeting and all, did not feel that we have been as effective as we'd like to have been in that, that there has not been redevelopment, not that, I mean, the existing apartments that are there?
They're all rented.
They're all rented, but there has not been any increase in?
The inventory?
In the inventory.
Now, do you think the issue there is parking?
Well, I would have said yes, except that, and planning knows better than I do on this, and I think that we discussed it, too, that the Settles Glass site, when we actually, we sort of went around on that, that we gave them an allotment of being able to have parking not on your site if you can lease it within a certain amount of space, a certain amount of?
Well, they were given a variance on their parking requirements, a waiver of their parking requirements. They actually got more, they did not, they were allowed to use to count spaces in the Station Street Lot without leasing them.
That's true, but don't we have something in place at this time? And maybe I'm mistaken, but I thought we had something in place?
Yes.
Where if there is parking that you can secure within a certain amount of distance from your location, then you don't have to provide parking on?
Yeah, it doesn't apply to Settles Glass, but you're right, that's what, you know, that's sort of how we allowed apartments to go, you know, to be permitted in the future if there wasn't parking available right there on the site, because we see that that's not really reasonable. But it doesn't seem to be working, so maybe we need to rethink that.
So, a perfect example is like the yellow building, the Lincoln Building, which is on the corner of South and Main. You know, if they were to build, if they were to build out second, third floor into apartments, while they don't have parking on property, they could lease out from any number of other?
From where?
Well, potentially from the hardware store, the, where the bank and all is, that lot?
Or CVS, perhaps?
Or CVS, or, I'm not, I'm not saying they would or they should, I'm just saying, I think that within that distance, they could. Am I wrong in that?
Well, before I would say that, I would first have to look at the parking on both those sites and say, is there any parking available? And I know on the CVS site, there is no.
Right, I mean, I'm not saying?
They're not overparked at CVS, for example, and I'm not really sure, I can't remember the numbers at the hardware store, but I?
I'm not saying they could. I'm not saying they'd be able to. I'm saying that legislation-wise, or they potentially could.
Potentially could.
I mean, I think our goal is to have more apartments in the square, to have people living there, so I think we should look at that and see what is getting in the way. I mean, I think the Lincoln Building is a tough one, because there's a lot of outstanding issues there, I think, that make it difficult, you know, the condition of the building, how to rebuild it with the train there now, but, I mean, I think it's important to us, and that would make, I mean, our square is vibrant, but we want it to be even more vibrant, so anything we can look at to, you know, we had that parking study done, I think by Jeff Derck.
And we have a good model for parking, where we put in, we hired some consultants, and we got a parking model, so that if a building's use was changed and the parking requirement were more intense, with this model, we can tell whether there's on-street parking in the square that would be sufficient for that. And I know that there are residents above the snug and the building next to the snug that park on the street, even though overnight, parking is allowed only on one block, on one side of one block of the street, so maybe we should be looking at creating an on-street parking program from 6:00 to 6:00, or whatever that?
I think, you know, that is something that could make a big difference. You know, will it? I'm not positive, but it's certainly something that, you know, could add, and I don't see it as a detriment in any way, but?
Another barrier that buildings like the yellow building have are the building code, where we have these historic structures, and I will tell you, we've been meeting with the property owner, and indications are that something will be moving forward to rebuild that building, but building code now says, if you have a mixed-use building, it has to be sprinkler, there's all these, especially if it's a wood frame building, that building needs an elevator, most likely, it's also right on the train tracks, and if you're within, if your building wall is within three feet of the train right-of-way, I think that you either can't have windows, or you need a special variance for construction, and so there's certainly, in a dense, older, historic downtown like we have, there certainly are a number of constraints that increase the development costs for people, and it's, not to say that that's a hardship, but it's a consideration. And so, one of the offsets that one property owner has been talking to us about, to try to address both the parking constraints and also the costs, are to have apartments on the second and third floor, but maybe smaller apartments, studios, or maybe target half of them to people that don't have cars, that may have a bike or take transit. And so, I'm seeing that the property owners are becoming creative. How do they still use their building and wrangle with these constraints? But it is a balancing act for most property owners. But I think that one property that you'll see some action on, we're meeting on it, so.
Great, great. It's good to hear.
I would just add that downtown Hingham has come a long way since 2007, and someone who's lived down there, there, sometimes you take the improvements for granted, you see them every day, but think about six, seven years ago, we didn't have the brick sidewalks, we didn't have lights. Lights are coming on now downtown, which adds to the value of it. The benches, the garden club work, so a lot of little things have really made it into a really nice area, and it's come a long way in the past six or seven years. We still can do more, but a big difference.
Which brings us to our next, let me just, let me just look very quickly before I open it up and say, you know, what suggestions do we have otherwise? But we had in here, we proactively planned for the changes in the squares stemming from the construction of the Green Bush line. We did that, we did the downtown improvement plan, and it was implemented. Increasing the parking downtown, that was completed through the Planning Board's diligent work through, for Station Street and on-street parking reconfiguration. Gaining access to the tunnel cap, as far as, this talked about parking for deliveries, dumpsters, and pedestrian use and all, and basically, it was redesigned for pedestrian use and to enhance the overall feel and accessibility of downtown. I think what we did do, though, is we made a concerted effort over those past, last several years, of putting delivery areas, specified delivery areas. If you remember back in 2005, '06, '07, you had, you know, the big, you know, coke trucks, beer trucks, whatever, and all, making deliveries in the middle of North Street, and, you know, that was a huge traffic backup, and I think through some of our efforts to provide loading dock areas and all in the back and the sides, we don't have, and also to limit that they can't do that during primaries and all, I think we've successfully, you know, curtailed that. And then, we had, the next thing on there is not for downtown, so moving forward, just on the Settles Glass, from that, there was a question up here further that we got onto the Settles Glass site from, which was that connection of the retail and office space and all from the square down to Upper North, and we started on the Settles Glass site and kind of stayed there, and then went back to the square, but we had tried, and continue to try, to promote retail going down, that, you know, the area of Upper North has historically been more office, first-floor office, which, by the way, is not in our, in our area of requiring a special permit in that area. We didn't go down, we stopped at Settles Glass, didn't we, Judy? Or did we go further down?
No, the whole downtown and running district.
So, it goes all the way down?
The, what happened is, if you have office on your first floor and you change to retail, you have five years to go, five or six years to go back to office. If, so, for example, the Gettigier site, once he switched from office to retail, to see if that works, if it didn't work, he could go back.
Within five years.
Five or six, yeah.
Right. So? So, you know, we have not been as successful in moving the retail down to that area as I would have hoped that we would have been by this point. I don't know that it is a, has anything to do with what we are doing or not doing, but more having to do with what the market bears and whether there are properties for sale or not for sale, you know.
Well, it's just a matter of foot traffic as well. You know, I think Gettigier just didn't get the foot traffic, and that's why she left.
Right.
So, you know, if people aren't walking down there, what do we do to promote people to get, to go there and support the businesses?
And that's where that Settles Glass site was an important site because it was a, it's a jump over, you know, it's people have to cross station, or they're at that site, and then they walk down toward the harbor. Which brings us to our next section, which is.
Before we switch off of the downtown, I just wanted to throw something out to get your feedback. I've heard a lot of conversation about regional initiatives, and in fact, there's been more and more grants for regional initiatives, trying to encourage towns to collaborate. And one thing that came up at our South Shore Business Meeting that we had, and I don't know if any of you were there, but the South Shore Chamber of Commerce was talking about perhaps opportunities for Hingham's downtown to collaborate regionally with our neighbor's Hull or Situate and say, you know, we may have one bed and breakfast, Situate may have one, the next town may have two. As a destination, a tourist destination, or a theme destination, whether it be a Harborfront or Historic Downtown, is there interest in possibly looking at partnerships with our neighboring towns where we may not be at a point right now where we say, come spend the weekend in downtown Hingham? Or we might be at a point where we say, come spend the weekend on the South Shore? And market ourselves as a collaborative and say, you know, you can shop up here and then go down here. There are grants out there to try to look at those types of initiatives, and there has been some talk at the Chamber of Commerce about encouraging collaboration, but I wonder how that's received by this group. Is there interest in that?
Well, I think anything that would bring, you know, shoppers or visitors would be appreciated. I think it's all going to depend on, you know, would it be like what we're having this weekend, the art walk or things like that? But there have been examples of good community collaboratives. I don't know it in relationship to this, but there have been at other venues, so, I mean, I think, I don't know why I wouldn't be interested in hearing or seeing examples. I mean, that's how I would feel about it. I mean, I can't think of a reason not to do it yet because I don't know enough about it.
Well, I'm just wondering if it's not our role for that, but maybe Hingham Historical or Hingham Downtown Association. I think those organizations might be more apt to work with something like that than the town.
It's, I mean, it's, exactly, or the Downtown Association would be a good. The thing is that at one point, about five or six years ago, Mary, we did look at and we talked and had recommended, the concept of having an economic development person, whether it was a part-time person on staff, or how that worked and all, someone who actually proactively promoted Hingham, both in terms of, you know, new companies coming in, you know, regionally with other South Shore towns and all. It's never been something that was funded. It was certainly something that we thought would be both useful and, I'll stop short of saying necessary, because I think there are, I mean, there are groups that can pick up the ball. But I'm wondering if, with the grant funding available, if something, you know, could come about from that? Or if even that grant funding could go to the Downtown Association or something who can, you know, who's directly benefit from increased traffic?
Would a recommendation, a broad recommendation to consider regional economic development initiatives as appropriate, or, you know, just something?
Yeah, I think that would be, I mean, I would.
I think it would be appropriate, but not necessarily from a marketing standpoint, but maybe perhaps from an infrastructure standpoint in that, you know, if there were change in bus lines or boat things, you know, from a transportation standpoint, I think we need regional cooperation for economic development.
Well, we have, we have transportation underutilized right now, so it's kind of the chicken and the egg. I mean, do we try and create something to capture people and to have them use that transportation? And I'm particularly thinking of the bus, you know, that, I mean, it just doesn't get utilized maybe as much as it should. So, I think it would be, I would be interested in hearing someone who has the, an overview or an experience with it. Is the funding, would the funding do something like that, introduce the different committees or the HDA, or how, when they discussed it at the meeting, how they could use it?
The discussions that I had were very broad, and it came up because there's some specialty shops, for example, that will put out a brochure and say, here's all of our locations on the South Shore. And so then the conversation evolved from there to say, what about tourism in Hingham and Situate and Cohasset? And, you know, why shouldn't people come to the shore for the weekend like they used to? And what's stopping that? Is it because people that want to come antiquing don't know where the antique stores are, or that people want to shop hop and go to restaurants don't know where they are? And how do we bring all that information together and market it and package it and advertise our region as a destination? And work together to say, there's some wonderful attractions here. And if you think about Salem, that's one community, they have all these walks and tours, and here we are, we're a destination. But why couldn't something like that happen for a region where we're all so close together?
And it does in other regions, I mean, there are. There are, you know, obviously, you know, Lexington, Concord, that area out there, they do because of their historical, you know, significance and things and all. But even North Shore, Salem and Newbury, but a lot of them, they do, they do join together. You know, in my past life, that's, you know, I was a hotel marketing and salesperson, and that is exactly, to regionally say, to be able to, if you had grants that then you could put highway signs that indicated that Historic Downtown Hingham was here, and, you know, Quincy was there and Plymouth was there, or however, or put out something that said, visit the South Shore, you know, if you're going for historic sites, there are all the historic sites and that. And those are things that are costly, those are, you know, putting things together, you know. But we're talking more in terms of marketing, and I know, Judy, you said you were thinking more in terms of infrastructure collaboration. I think, I think what Mary was talking about was probably more on the marketing side, but I see the importance of what you're saying in the infrastructure and how we can even, you know, economize by maybe.
Maybe this is tangential, but getting here is half the battle, and I know we had a grant for wayfaring signs.
That was going to be my next thing that we need to finish, though.
So I would put that on here, that that should be.
So we do, we had a grant for wayfaring signs, and the wayfaring program has been created. It is awaiting approval by the Historic Commission and the Board of Selectmen. The HDIC has approved it as for wayfaring signs through Hingham, throughout Hingham, taking us from the highway down to the square.
However, that was just for the design of them.
Right. Again, the cost for those signs and all, you know, is not insignificant, yeah, $30,000, give or take. But it hasn't been funded. Once it gets the approval of the Selectmen and all, then it's got to be determined where the funding's going to come from. So I guess my recommendation would be, as you brought up, Judy, that we move forward with certainly the approval and the discussion on how, whether through public or private funds, that wayfaring sign is just going to.
Sue, can you tell me what a wayfaring sign is? I'm sorry to be ignorant.
A wayfaring sign is, basically, it indicates from, basically, the Derby Street area and from 228 from Queen Anne's Corner. It's a sign that's smaller than the entering Hingham signs, but not that much smaller than them. And there's, there would be about 12 to 13 of them in different intersections indicating to people how to get to downtown, how to come down to Historic. And it's Historic Downtown Hingham was the final wording on that, because it's designed so that it doesn't promote the retailers, it doesn't promote the restaurants, it doesn't promote, it promotes what we are, which is a Historic Downtown.
And it doesn't confuse the square center issue, so you had to.
Yes, exactly.
Be careful of the language.
Yeah, so that was, it was vetted out significantly this past year through a number of meetings with HDIC and Historic. Okay, so let's, so, as we're moving down toward the harbor, and I guess my question at this point is, further discussion regarding square, potential square improvements, potential that, economic development-wise, what, any recommendations or suggestions or thoughts? Greg, I know you and I had some conversation the other day about.
Well, I'd love to hear from this group about, you know, when I think of the master plan, I kind of think of, it's not necessarily looking behind, but forward. And what does this group really envision downtown looking like? I hear apartments up, you know, on second floor, but are those, you know, family of six packed into a studio apartment? Or is that young people? Is that empty nesters? Who do we think are really going to be attracted? Or would we like to attract being those apartments? And then from there, what are the missing components we'd like to see?
Well, you work there, so what do you think?
Well, I think.
What do you see happening that could?
I mean, I think when you talk about smart roads, mixed-use development, you typically see either younger couples who haven't had kids yet, maybe moving out of South Boston, looking for their first purchase, they're renting in Boston, or you look at empty nesters who are downsizing and looking for, you know, some active more into doing pretty well, something similar to that. I think the missing component for both of those, I think, is transportation. Because typically, as evidenced by the warnings, people are looking to get rid of at least one car, if not both, in this area, both can be a wish, not realistic. But if I'm living downtown, but I'm still working, how do you get to Boston? What do you do? I don't do that.
Well, I'm a mile from the train station, so I drive, and I would rather not, you know, because I am late, so I don't walk the mile, but.
That hands up the competitive.
But we tried, this goes back to the transportation piece, we tried to work with the T to kind of persuade them that the 220 bus isn't used to its maximum.
And it is, and it is in the, it is in the MBTA's.
Docket or whatever.
It's on their docket to take up as a recommendation, because it was a zero-sum difference. We wanted to take some of the, we had a subcommittee of the HDIC, which was the Intermodal Transit Committee, and we wanted to take some of the current buses that run up here, which throughout the entire day, there are four people on average that take the bus that comes all the way up to Hingham Center and all, and we kind of know when those times are and all. We had worked it out that in conjunction with the train times, the bus could, instead of making a loop up here, make the loop over to the West Hingham Station. So it's on the, on the books, if you want, for, to have that happen, but the T has not acted on it. And maybe that's, maybe that's something that should be in the recommendations, that we push harder on the T to facilitate, to make that happen. Because I think if we could get the 220 bus to act in conjunction with the trains going in, it would make a huge difference. And it would, there's a whole, there's a whole array of people that live between the square and the West Hingham train station that would then effectively have service that don't have it now. So I think, I think you're right, that would be a concrete thing that we could, we could do. And it's just something that the T has, it was in their 2011 plan, which they haven't opened yet because they're, I don't know, but, you know, so, so that's, I think that's, is that a good recommendation, you think? Is that a good channel?
We had also called Zipcar to see if they would look at the shipyard as a place to put a Zipcar station. But at the time, you know, their business model is to allow for urban dwellers to live without cars, so they would see Zipcars coming to the South Shore from Boston, you know, if somebody wanted to come here, but they didn't. So maybe once they saturate those markets, they would consider a place like the shipyard where you could really live car-free if there were something like Zipcar there.
The other, the other thought is, you know, which, you know, just kind of jostled my thought in there, is that bike, the bike sharing, which is being done significantly in a lot of towns, and very heavily in Boston, that I know a lot of people right now that even they, they take the train and all to South Station, they hop on a bike, and then they bike to wherever their office is. And they're popping up all over. Now, I don't know if, are those managed by the towns themselves, or are they, or is it a program? You know what I mean? That might even be something, Mary, that is grant-related, that there are, because of, you know, the nature of, you know, healthy living and all, that we could, we could have the bike racks at the, at the train station and the bike racks downtown and all, and maybe the bike racks at the shipyard, too. And, you know, that way, it encourages, you know, the, I mean, what do you think? Is that a, or with?
I think most people who live in Hingham have bikes. I would be curious before looking at that, as to how many people drive their bikes to the train.
Right. I was thinking about kind of the new people that we're talking about, but you're right.
And the good weather, I think you see about five or six bikes locked up there.
Yeah.
Not too many, but I do see people commonly on earlier trains coming in on bikes.
Yeah. But definitely, to Greg's point, I think it's the link from, because there's no station on Station Street, having a link would be great.
Hopefully, they'll, now, at least stay on their radar. Hopefully, they'll, they'll at least stay on your radar. We can follow it up with the Intermodal Committee, too.
And do it that way. So I think that should be a recommendation, that we lean harder and follow up with the T on that. Did that answer? Greg, or was that more, was that part of it, or did you have other thoughts on, on moving forward? Like, when you talked about, you know, six families, two families...
Well, I guess, I guess the question, and we had this conversation over, is the downtown vibrant enough? Is it something we're looking to see more development in, or redeveloping? I'm not sure I have a clear understanding, both of this committee, as well as where the community kind of sits on that.
So what's our thought?
Well, I think we want more people living downtown. We already talked about that, right?
That's development, right? Because we don't have really enough houses, like, we're not...
Right, right. No, but I think that that's what, that's what we've been hoping for, for at least as long as I've been on the planning board, is to get more apartments upstairs downtown. And so we made a number of changes to the Downtown Overlay District. We had one significant project proposed probably around 2004, 2005, I'm guessing, to put rather a large, three-story building with underground parking and luxury apartments on the corner of Cottage and North, which I think was in keeping with what the type of redevelopment that we would have wanted to see downtown, but it would be an interesting conversation at some point to go back to that, because the neighbors were strongly against it, and the owners decided the cost of building it was prohibitive. But that would be a great example of, is that what we want in downtown Hingham? You know, it was really a full three-story building, and maybe that's something that people who are joining us tonight would want to pine on, because I think that that would give us an indication as planning board, you know, is, do we go to, you know, to try to encourage that type of construction?
Right.
I do think the rise of the shipyard has also impacted that. A lot of people who've, you know, were inclined to live downtown have moved to the shipyard instead, so that's been a big factor.
But that's a product of a lack of inventory, more than it's a lack of, I mean, I think anyone would choose to live downtown rather than the shipyard, given the option, at least if you want to be in Hingham. So that's an inventory issue, more than it's a location issue, I think.
Curious, sorry, curious, Mary, the conversation you're having with the current property owner with the yellow building, does he feel that if he's able to reduce the size of the units, that he can get the yield to make that project financially viable?
I haven't seen floor plans, but when you have an older building like that, frequently you have to make the units smaller so you can accommodate the elevator, because that's, wasn't in there before. He is firm that he wants to retain the business on the first floor, and he would like units upstairs.
And he's talking about condominiums, correct? He was when he met with us.
Right.
As opposed to apartments.
Right now, we're talking about the physical form, not the financing of it.
Jerry, what do you think?
Well, one thing that I'm recalling...
Jerry, I just have to, yeah, say your name.
...166 Hurst Street. As I recall from the Downtown Overlay Bylaw, aren't the residential units limited to one or two bedrooms? And if that's, if that's in fact the case...
I think you're right.
Kind of goes to what Greg was talking about, which is, is that, is that appropriate? Or does that limit us too much? I don't know the answer, but, you know, having kind of been through the exercise with that came for that building you just referenced, and then looked at a couple of other potential developments as well, sometimes, you know, if your goal is to create higher value units, it may be that limiting the number of bedrooms might actually compromise style of a potential developer a little bit. And I wasn't quite sure I understood, you know, what the rationale was originally for limiting the bedroom count, but, you know, that is something that I believe is still in there, and I'd like to take a look at that, to reconsider. What was the original rationale? But I do think that one of the, it's one of the biggest issues that any residential development is going to face, especially in condos, is going to be, because the kind of people that generally are going to be attracted to these units are, you know, likely they can have at least one car or two. And you can wish that it weren't the case, but it probably will be. So a building like the Lincoln Building, I suspect that's one of the biggest issues, is that you literally can't put parking on that site. It's just, it looks like a big building, but it isn't. Even if you were to build something underground, you did something really clever, you can't put very many cars, even if it were a big lot. So that parking issue is really, really intrinsic to viability of any development. And I think some of the, you know, some of the parcels in town that seem to have large lot sizes could be, you know, could support residential development, but so many of the smaller lots can't. It's hard to grasp, it's like you said, you know, you can look at some of these places, like CBS property, it seems to have a big parking lot, but the fact is, they simply can't lease out parking to someone else, but they need it by zoning to support their own, you know, their own building. So it's a bit of a conundrum, and I don't know, did, when Cecil, did their master plan, did they identify properties that had excess parking? Is that part of it?
That was not part of the...
We only looked at on-street parking, I believe.
Right.
Kind of an on-street parking.
You know, again, if you're thinking about condo owners that are not going to be really happy about parking their nice cars on the street overnight, in the winter time, you know, on some point, that it's a little bit more delicate. And it would, you know, so like you say, the Bylaw seems to allow remote parking, but if it doesn't exist, you know, you just kind of can't think of, how do we make it exist?
Right.
Another way of looking at it, and I don't know, I don't know where excess parking is right now.
Was there some discussion about, for example, if you, or consideration given for occupancy of a particular store, a building that was retail, and then, but in the evening, when the people who came to stay upstairs, then that parking would be, you know, converted from retail usage to the habitant of the building? I mean, isn't there a consideration that goes on when you do that?
Sure.
So that that could help with that, as far as the parking issue?
For the hardware store space, maybe.
Right. Or Talbot's would be another example, that somebody, you know, because they close at a certain time, could somebody utilize that for night, and is that, can we do that now? Or is that something that would be a change we would have to make?
I think that's happened before, hasn't it? Wasn't that...
I think we can, you can do that, because that would be the...
Right. That would be under the leasing of the spaces. I think all of this, to me, goes to a bigger picture, a bigger question about what the property owners downtown have an appetite to do, because we can sit here and...
Right.
...talk about all of this, but without representation from the property owners, I feel like we're not really going to get too far. And, you know, I tried to, with a number of other people, create a Business Improvement District downtown a number of years ago, and there was not enough interest. But if that were to be resuscitated, it might go a long way to answering some of these questions about, you know, what to do about parking, what to do about some shared space and that kind of thing.
It might behoove us to speak to Situit about this, that really dealt with all of these issues down in the harbor about early 2000, late 1990s. They started a shopkeeper bylaw once the Millworf Apartments went in, and they started rehabbing some of those structures, like the Bell, where we became apartments above, and retail down below, and then the old Five and Ten did the same thing. That all evaporated in the economy. It all stopped. There were proposals for the old Clippership to have something similar, and the old Pier Forty-four. And they have similar issues like we do, because the train station is so far away from the harbor. It's a problem with parking. They have a municipal lot, Cold Parkway, that's available for all of the shopkeepers, and also the apartments. That has not gotten traction going again, though. I mean, once the economy hit, it never got going again, and people went in different directions. But all the issues that we're being talked about, that we're talking about, I know that Situit looked at a while back.
They grew very fast. I mean, even with...
The economy, right. And then the economy shut it down, they couldn't absorb it, and then the properties they were looking at to go to next, they went in different directions. Absolutely. But very similar issues to us, the train station is too far away to really benefit the downtown, and the businesses in the winter really have a difficult time holding on. And the theory was, if people were living there, kind of like the shipyard, they would patronize the businesses. And I think it started to work, and then the economy happened.
What's happened, very similar to Hingham, is the restaurants are driving.
Right.
Any driving they're doing, it's driven by restaurants similar to here.
Yeah, exactly.
It's like the restaurants, and then the shops, and, you know, it's...
And that's the one thing I would say, that, you know, we have, we have, our number of restaurants have doubled over the last several years, and we're not, we're actually not at saturation point yet in that. And I would also make note that we, this happened at, at a time when we also put into place the meals tax in town, that many people thought was going to be a death knell for our restaurants, and it's proven to be any, not a, not a significant issue in any way, shape, or form for the restaurants, but certainly a significant increase to our town. Money's coming in, so, you know, that, you know, has, has, you know, just, it's something to note, I think, from our, from key learnings, you know, of what we do. I want to move down, we're going to move down toward the harbor here now, because one of the big things is how we link downtown to the harbor. Just as, just as, as we do this, one thing that's, has been bantered around at different times, but certainly not a, I'm not making this as a recommendation, or any, any sort of suggestion, but merely a perception and a, and a fact, is that the post office takes up a large amount of property area in downtown, as a distribution center and a retail site. And the, I believe it is no longer a distribution center, it was, it was something that was large there, because it was a distribution center, and it is no longer that. And is, I guess, I, just putting into people's thought process, for the future, for the present, not that we would ever want to not have a post office downtown, because it is a significant destination, but my question would be, is it something we would want to look at in the future, whether the post office would be ever interested in maintaining a smaller retail presence, and not need that large amount of space? When we talk about the economic development and growth of downtown, I think that's...
Well, I think the Mary's point of the marketing also, one thing I just believe is correct, we can have a, what is it? An inn? Can't have an inn? What's the rule for lodging down, our bylaws?
We have a bed and breakfast bylaw, but apparently, and this might be something that people want to look at, and there may be a bylaw change, proposal coming in, I'm not sure, but the way our bylaw is written, we've had only, well, two applicants come in and actually create bed and breakfasts. One, I think, is not really, I don't know that either one of them is actually an ongoing concern, but there was a third that came in and started the process, but I believe they withdrew the application primarily on the requirement that it be owner-occupied. So I don't know if that's going to be changed, or if somebody has a proposal to change that.
I hadn't heard about that this year, because there was some talk about it, but so far, nothing.
Is that something we want to do? I don't, I don't know.
Well, and that's a discussion that we had at our last meeting, those of us that were there, was that, you know, we, those of us there felt it was, it, an important component that we're missing in town is some sort of an inn or a bed and breakfast in the town, that currently, anyone coming to town, and it goes, Mary, to your, you know, discussion about, you know, visitors and all, that, you know, they either have to stay over the Rockland Line and over there, and on that end of town, or down at the Clarion, or down in Cohasset, pretty good distance from Hingham. And something that we thought, you know, we were, we were doing the in the perfect world kind of, kind of concept and all, and that, that an inn, so, so as we move down toward the harbor, some of the discussion we were talking about, you know, centered around the vistas and all, but that the area around, across the street from the harbor, where currently, you know, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, we're not saying, oh, this person should sell us this property, this person should sell us that property, or do whatever, but certainly that there's a number of establishments going down from the food center down, that if they were to come up for sale at some point in the future and things and all, that they would not be a bad site for an inn, was the, was the, was the thought process in that. You know, that, that did not block views of the harbor, I mean, did not block the harbor, but certainly was, was a, a, a site that would not be a negative site for an inn.
When, when the bylaw for the bed and breakfast was put in play, and it was owner-occupied, what was, what was that about? Just...
I think we didn't want people buying up houses and putting in bed and breakfasts. I mean, I think we had this, I don't know, vision that that might happen, so, I mean, I think partly, too, we wanted to see how it would work. You know, I think it was a sort of step, it was a, it was a first step, and I think it is something we can, we could look at, you know.
I think most towns that have bed and breakfast bylaws require that it be owner-occupied. Hull does, I know. I think Situit does.
Situit does, too.
What is, what is, I guess we'd like to, we'd like to get a sense of what planning thinks on, on the concept of the inn, of an inn or a bed and breakfast, or...
Yeah, the variable, how one versus the other. Would, an inn would not require somebody to be the owner occupant, right?
Well, maybe we need a different provision for the Downtown Overlay District and the South Hingham Overlay District, you know, that, that creates an inn...
Definition.
An inn definition and allows inns with a special permit in the, because I think bed and breakfast, by definition, is typically an owner-occupied, smaller place with a limited number of rooms and that kind of thing. If we're really talking about kind of a hotel, but a small one that fit into the character of the town, then I personally think that the Downtown Overlay District and the South Hingham Overlay District would be two good areas where it would fit with the commercial nature of the surroundings.
So a recommendation that then, that I would put forth would be that we look into coming up with the specifications of how we could, we could bring that about.
I think that sounds like a good idea for...
Yeah.
An inn bylaw. I mean, definitely...
A special permit.
Yeah.
In those areas that Judy was talking about, the overlay districts.
Because we have identified those two areas as, you know, targeted for economic development.
Exactly, exactly. So as we, as we, we're talking about going toward the harbor, and all, in our last master plan, in our last, I shouldn't say last, the present master plan and all, from... in our last, I shouldn't say last, the present master plan and all, from, we, you know, when we did the downtown improvement plan with the Cecil Group and all, they was talking about a flyover going over 3A to connect the harbor. One of the major, major issues we were trying to do was connect the harbor to downtown and downtown to harbor. And there had been conversation about the, the flyover pedestrian walkway, if you will, and/or the redesigning of that area down there, the entrance toward, from the harbor into downtown Hingham, taking out the island in the middle of the, of the, of North Street there and widening and kind of, you know, all kinds of different things. I don't think we are currently pursuing that in any way. Am I correct?
We did do a, we did a safety study with the state on the Summer Street Rotary area and the whole harbor front, heading down towards Nantasket. And if anybody would like to have that safety audit, certainly we can email it to you. It had a number of recommendations, ranging from sightline and pedestrian access, bikeway access, to redesigning the intersection, you're talking about redesigning the rotary. So as far as the safety audit goes, the next step is for staff to pursue some of the recommendations and coordinate with the state. And also consider moving forward to pursue a redesign of the rotary. And that, of course, follows a few steps behind what's going on with the Derby Street corridor. I will share with you that one of the recommendations in the plan is to provide a more pedestrian-friendly area and more bicycle access along the waterfront and to downtown and heading down towards Nantasket. And staff is actually in the process of applying for a grant to do a corridor study to look at providing a complete bike and pedestrian connection from the harbor front to Nantasket. And that will position us for more grants in the future.
I can tell you the biggest problem with that corridor since I've walked and lived in that corridor is, is speed along 3A. And some of that is the fault of the driver, but a lot of that is confusion. And if you go just in Hingham, in the Hingham line, to the hull line, the speed limit changes from 25 up to 45 along the same stretch of water. And it's, Harvard can't blame the driver, not always. And I hit the brake at the lobster pound, and there's always the cops standing there trying to nap somebody. And it's helpful because you're literally getting your hands in from walking from Crow Point to downtown. And a lot of families, you know, who love the walkers, kids who go to the farmer's market or down to Stars, and you don't know. And it's a simple thing for the state to just get a uniform speed limit just before you jump in, you can go through it. And I, I laugh, quite frankly, I'd say that directly, really kind of directly, that we're talking about traffic problems around there, but the pinch is down by the lobster pound. So you're never going to get more cars through that area. It's really to do with traffic calming and trying to figure out a way to pace the cars through there. Because unless you're going to widen an area, it's going to be one lane down in that area for foreseeable future.
I was gonna say, I think, I mean, an issue from a pedestrian standpoint is the sidewalks going from, are on North Street going out to the harbor, where Ts at the harbor, in my mind, are pretty dangerous. I mean, if you, if you have young kids and you're either walking with them with a bike or with a stroller, it narrows considerably, and you also have, you know, high-speed traffic coming at you from Route 3A. So from, from our perspective, I mean, it's harder to change, you know, what a state road is, but I think we could do some work on that corner to really think about widening the sidewalk or making it a little more pedestrian-friendly to get-
You're taking right on 3A.
Well, if you're coming from downtown and you're looking at the harbor and Stars is on your left, and, you know, that, that sidewalk narrows considerably with, you know, I know the posts are there, the light poles, and some of that'll change, but it's not all that pedestrian-friendly, that, that walk going towards 3A, especially when you're young children. I mean, anytime you come out to the harbor to try to use it with, you know, with more than two people side by side, it becomes, I think, dangerous. And I think it dissuades you from walking down there. At least it dissuades me. I mean, I live on Hershey Street and do that walk a lot, and I won't take my kids in a, in a stroller through that intersection because I think that people move too quickly. And I think that the sidewalk is not accommodating for something that's wider than one or two people.
I think all those are good points. And the intersection you're talking about, that light, is a long light. So if you're going to wait there, you're going to be waiting there a while before it turns. But, you know, you compare, so obviously the impediment to getting people to the harbor is obviously the traffic through 3A. So that's like the barrier to getting people over there. But then you look at left place like Wallaston Beach in Quincy, right? And you've got a divided highway there, much more, much greater traffic, lights are staggered throughout that area to slow traffic down. But people want to go to the other side of the street. And, you know, when I do drive to work in the summertime and I drive home that way sometimes, you see a lot of people along the beach. They're not really going to the beach, but they're on that pathway jogging and biking and walking, tremendous amounts of people. So you've got to give people a reason to want to go across the street. And, you know, we got a great coffee shop there. We don't have a lot of other reasons to go across the street right now. And maybe the path that Mary's talking about where someone could bike the, the four or five miles from Hingham Beach down to Nantasket, might be something that would appeal to people who want to go over there and walk out. But until we get something that's going to, going to get people across the harbor, it's-
That's a great segue because that's exactly, I was going to say, that sounds good. That was very good. That was perfect. Because that, that brings us to the next, the next area is, is, and while, you know, we fully recognize that harbor development and all, it's, it's the purview of other, other groups and all to, to, to decide, you know, what, what's happening at the harbor and all, it's certainly in terms of economic development as well within our purview to, to make recommendations. And certainly, right, right now, you're right. We have a, a successful coffee shop that does well and does bring people across the street there. And, and from, from downtown and vice versa. There's, there's a, an RFQ going out, or an RFP going out very soon, I believe, on the increased, the improvements to the bathhouse and to include a small, has it been defined? Is it a ice cream coffee shop?
Concession stand.
Concession stand to go there. Not one with seating at this time, but one that, the, I believe, is it, is it planning that is putting that together, or is it the selectmen that's putting together the RFP on that?
I know that Harbor Development is very involved with that, working with Betty.
The trustees of the bathing beach.
And so, again, that was going toward the concept of, of bringing more people to that, to the harbor area to enjoy. I think from, from HDIC's perspective, from some conversations we had in the last few weeks, it, we consider it imperative to maintain the vista. I know we, we talked about, a little bit about Situit and, and, and the development and all down there. While I think there's, they've done some, some terrific development down there, there's a lot of non-visibility of their harbor at this point. I don't think we would want to, I, speaking, speaking just for myself, I wouldn't want to see us lose, lose the vista of, of being able to see the harbor. That being, that being said, I do think having some retail uses down there is a good thing.
Like where?
Well, when I say, I say retail, I say the concession stand is retail. The coffee shop is retail. I'm not talking about having, you know, I don't think Nan should set up shop down there.
So, but that bylaw was already, that bylaw was changed two years ago, I think, to allow for the coffee shop and the ice cream stand, all right?
Right.
And I know, excuse me, that the, there's a, a proposal for Lincoln Maritime Center to become a town-wide resource. I don't know if you guys have seen the, the presentation. So there's a citizen in town who's leading an effort to create a Hingham Community Boating Center on the wharf that Lincoln Maritime currently occupies. And it would be a center for, it would be a much larger building that would allow for year-round use of that dock for sailing, rowing, and other waterfront activities. But it involves, the project involves turning that rotary into a T and widening the sidewalks there. And so I think that letting that, and they're working with the Harbor Development Committee on that, I think letting that project lead the way on all these issues that we're talking about, about the speed of the traffic and everything, might make sense at this time, although we could certainly support it in any way we, we could if it meant the slowing of traffic and the increase in things going on.
Yeah, I think there are things, while that is being implemented, which will take some time for many reasons. Kevin had a very good thought at one of our last meetings, and I'll let you talk about that.
Yeah, I mean, I thought it was just from, like, a, a usage standpoint, it just, it seems like it's a natural spot for younger families especially to use, but there's not, there's a lot of green space. People don't use the green space. They don't picnic lunch there. They don't play sports on the field there, I mean, or if you'd call it a field. So I don't, maybe it's a lack of knowledge, but confused as to why there's not more of a pursuit of something like a simple playground there, or something like a small amphitheater or benches that move to a stage. You know, the Newcomers Club puts on a concert there and drew, I don't, 150 people there. And it's a one-time event, but it does draw access to that park. I know they have problems with geese there, and a lot of people are dissuaded from using it because of the geese, but kind of talking about what we can do to draw more people down there. And I don't know if a playground is something that has to be zoned into use there, or if it's something that people, you know, if the, you know, the trustees are kind of opposed to. But it seems that that kind of usage would be low cost and high impact because it would draw people across 3A to, to the beach. Because it's not a beach that people use to swim. It's a beach that I think you bring kids to because there's not a lot of tide there, or a beach that you go and sit, sit at. You don't really use it like you use Nantasket. So that kind of usage seems to support the usage of the beach, beach there, at least in my opinion. And I certainly don't speak for a lot of young families, but I mean, certainly people in my peer group, I think, feel similarly about the way it's used and what would draw, you know, draw someone like me there.
Well, and interestingly, we have to remember that, you know, it's not just the bathing beach area, it extends all the way over to Lincoln, you know, where, where the Lincoln City and Club areas and all. And, you know, prime open space area right now is the, the area that used to be the mobile gas station, which does have to remain, remain open or recreational or something like that, so, some, something like a playground. And I don't think we're talking about a playground that's, you know-
But it sure doesn't look inviting right now, that, you know, the old mobile, just a, you know. So I do think that that, I, you know, I was driving by that just the other day and thinking we really need to do something to make that more attractive, more, you know, a place you want to go and sit or read or play or anything.
Exactly. Did, did anybody from the audience, I thought, okay, it's good to be here. The, so, so that would, so I would put that as a, as a, as a recommendation then, I think, to look into, to the possibility of, so if we were looking at enhancing economic development on the harbor, and, and by economic development, I mean, use and, and vibrancy, I think we would, we would put a playground in there. I would certainly see where we would, we would encourage, I guess we would, I don't, I don't want to see we would encourage that use, the, the, the community sailing program because I don't think it's something that we can encourage at this time, or discourage. I think it's still in the vetting process. But certainly watch closely because it's important, it's, it, it could be an important component. I think we have got to solve or, or better manage the geese problem down there. And I say that in all with the full knowledge that it is not an easy thing to do. But somewhere, people are doing it. And if we really want people to come down there and picnic or use it, I think we need to-
Well, more usage would eliminate some of that, too. If there are more people and more activity and so on, that would-
The geese wouldn't be there, yeah.
That would, you know, discourage them.
Yeah, discourage. We certainly are, you know, we think the farmer's market and all has been a huge addition down there. And moving forward, you know, would encourage, you know, like uses, I guess, that would be.
I think the improvements to the snack shop will help. Yes, Judy mentioned that, the improvements to the sailing center, some, something to connect that people could maybe run along or walk along or bike along will help as well. One thing we're very fortunate about, we do have a wonderful advocate, Alan Peralta, who's our Harbor Development Chairman. He's a wonderful advocate for the harbor, and I know he's thinking about the geese problem, some of the other issues we raised, too. A couple of years ago, we had a dog ready to go down there. There was a collie who was trained to, to just basically run around and scare geese away, but I think he retired right before he's about, he's about to go into service. We can find someone else.
There you go. There is one area down there that is, that is privately owned, that is the area down near Gallery 360, where Gallery 360 is and all. Does the planning board have any thoughts about that area down there?
No, whatever's in the, I mean, I think we took a, probably three years ago, we took a hard look at the zoning on the harbor and made some changes to it at town meeting to allow for those commercial uses. And there were some dimensional requirements that were changed. But I think everybody ended up feeling that the, that the zoning was pretty, was appropriate.
So we're pretty, so we're pretty, um-
Again, if somebody wanted to change that, I think, because the focus was a lot of what you're saying now, which is to bring people there for recreational uses, waterfront uses, not, not to change the vista, not to change kind of the public nature of the area.
So then we would leave it at that, that we're pretty comfortable with the zoning and the, and the permitting down there? Okay.
I guess, as, as a resident, I'm confused, quite frankly, because I hear, maybe it's just because of the part of it's publicly owned and part of it's privately owned, because there's, is the, does the town wish to see the harbor side of 3A potentially developed for private or publicly slash commercial property? Or is it just that to keep that side of 3A open space?
I think the, the town bought a mobile gas station that was on that side of 3A because the town wanted it to be preserved as open space.
But, I mean, as, as Sue pointed out, we all know there's the other private parcels all the way up to Lincoln Maritime. I think you both have to build going toward it, yes. You know, the, the more of the goals of the massive plan is to promote more pedestrian uses, particularly along the waterfront, but yet the need to expand and making that more pedestrian-friendly is probably going to be, you know, take a look at the sidewalks and, 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 beach that never saw resistance.
But there were, there were, there was intense, intense, no, more use of the harbor this summer than in prior years. I know that there were different types of classes and kayak trips and things like that. So it seems like that there has been change. And I know that the Harbor Development Committee has done a lot of work on creating a path, creating a bridge.
But I think, but I think my point is the master.
Where does it work in here?
I should do a rebook on the master.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
As a outsider, as a newbie, say, okay, oh, I see a clear vision for the, for the harbor. It's for more recreation.
Yeah, there's no section for it.
For this, for that. I'm a business company in town, and I want to do a kayaking center. And say, okay, well, I'm going to go meet with the bathing trustees, now getting nitty gritty, but if they say to me, no, we don't want you to do it this year, I say, well, I don't understand your master plan, your town is the top of the master plan, that clearly says you would like these policies.
Well, it seems like it would be a goal under recreation to improve the connectivity of the open space on the harbor for recreational uses.
Is that in our current master plan right now?
I don't think so.
But we're redoing one so we can.
Right, right.
So it's a timely, it's a very timely comment.
I think in the past, we've been quite limited at the harbor, where we, after accessing, I mean, acquiring the mobile, gave us a little more flexibility. I mean, and the bathing beach is controlled by the trustees. It's, it's a complicated, and I think we've really been trying to kind of understand it and what we can do.
And 360 popped up and was for sale, would we want that to go to CPC to help with the connectivity to convert to that? Is that a priority?
I would say that would be exactly what we would want to do.
Yeah.
That was the goal, to try and buy as much as we could there. We missed the one that Hastings bought, the boat.
The dock, yeah.
Yeah. But that was, I, it's my understanding that that was the goal to.
I think from the HDIC perspective, that was always one of, one of our, one of our thoughts and, and recommendations would be that we control the vista of the harbor and all. And so if, if.
And in so doing, make it more user-friendly and make it something that the town would use as a whole, not just the boaters, because that was the concern that, you know, just the people went down there who were launching their boat or had their boat moored or whatever. And a big goal was to make it more user-friendly for all of the town.
Right, but whether it's privately owned or, I didn't think we took an opinion on whether it was privately owned or publicly owned. I thought we tried to zone it for the uses that we wanted to see down there with, regardless of the.
Of the ownership.
Ownership. So this idea that our goal is to buy up the harbor, I've never heard that before tonight.
Well, how many, how many are privately owned now? There's the Gallery, Gallery 360.
Just those two, three.
And the one beside it.
And Bearcove Marina.
Right.
I don't think, I wouldn't go so far to say it was a goal, and certainly not from CPC, as to, you know, we, when we, when the mobile, when the mobile site came up, and, and I was pretty involved in it at, at the time, that it was not something that we thought was possible. We hadn't, we hadn't put it in a master plan before because it wasn't even something that was on the radar, you know, that that would come for, up for availability, and that we had the ability to, to, to purchase it, just to, to, to have a deciding factor in, in what was going to go on that side of the harbor. And I guess, and I think what Greg is asking is, is that something that, that we think is important? Or Judy, it sounds like what you're saying is you think that it can all be taken care of through zoning.
That's what, see, the master plan is not zoning, right? I'm a married educator.
Well, it can be.
The master plan is the vision.
Right.
Twenty years, we would love to see this part of town look like this.
Right.
Now we get into the zoning portion, okay, what zoning supports our master plan?
Right. But it, but it's not the ownership either. It's not whether the town owns the property or not, that's all.
I'm still.
No, you're right.
And we just mentioned useful harbor, but a useful harbor, Kevin means a playground. To me, it may be a restaurant, and to someone else, it may be a bench looking at the birds. What is our vision, again, for the master plan, for the harbor?
Well, I think Eileen articulated what I have always heard, and I don't know if anybody's heard something different, was that it would be, you know, bringing people to the harbor to enjoy it, and that was kind of a multifaceted enjoyment, the population's enjoyment of the harbor, not businessmen's enjoyment of the harbor, not, you know, cars, but just the population of Hingham's enjoyment of the harbor. That's what I.
Right. And that doesn't necessarily have to be achieved by the town owning it, but it does have to be, but it can be achieved by the town controlling it, by zoning, by permitting, by.
Yeah, but I guess what you're saying is that in the, in the master plan, we don't need to say how it would be achieved. We would just say that we want people to use the harbor more.
So if a CPC plan were to come available to buy that, would we want to direct, would that be a priority of theirs to say, okay?
I think we'd have to ask them.
Right. And that's the other thing, is really we're, we're crossing over now into Harbor Development's kind of territory. We can, we, we, this is not, we can make recommendations of what, from an economic development or a planning standpoint, we think should go into the master plan, I think, on this. But I think the decision of what goes into it, am I, am I correct or not correct, Mary, that that rests with Harbor Development?
Right, you're, you're 100% correct. I have a couple of comments. The master plan isn't where you might say, identify a specific zoning, you know, rezone this property to this because we want a hamburger restaurant here. It's more of a global direction. However, if there was a sense among the group or the community that a broader range of uses should be allowed in a certain area, or a more specialized group of uses should be allowed, you could make a, a recommendation in the master plan to reevaluate the permitted uses in the downtown overlay district, or, you know, that type of thing. That's how you can speak to zoning and encourage a broader conversation about where the zoning may help guide the future development by tweaking it. I will say with regard to land acquisition, Abby Pierceall is working with the Land Acquisition Group, and she's, and the Conservation Commission, of course, and she's working to help them kind of formalize some land acquisition guidelines. You know, how do you rate and prioritize acquisitions? Is there a matrix or a scoring potential? How do you decide as a community what are priority connections and what aren't? And so I know that there are groups that are already looking at that. The master plan may not be where you would say, we want to purchase that property, but it's appropriate in the master plan to say, you know, the community may need more land for future municipal facilities, you know, consider opportunities within South Hingham for a future public safety complex, or, you know, that type of thing. If you want to target a property, you know.
So our recommendations then for the harbor, if, and, just as I'm saying, saying them, just kind of say right, wrong, indifferent, but would be to increase the accessibility sidewalk-wise and all to the, to the pedestrian and bike-friendly whiteways, both, both to the harbor and around the harbor, okay? Because, believe it or not, it gets tremendous amount of foot traffic and bicycle traffic, particularly from the Crow Point area and all, that area coming down from, from the Lobster Pound and all. And the sidewalk is, is, is very bad there, but it gets a lot of use, and so that, that I think would be a priority. I think that we would encourage the, we are, we, we, we are, we are in agreement with the zoning bylaw as it was changed in the last couple of years to allow for small concession type of, of activity and all down there. That would drive greater activity and greater use of, of the harbor. Certainly the, you know, the farmer's market type of things and all are, are something we liked. We would encourage looking into the possibility of a playground on the harbor as a, as a, as another means of, of increasing activity. We would definitely encourage the maintenance of the vista of the harbor, and, and through whatever, whatever means the, the planning and zoning and Harbor Development Committees and all see, see as necessary to do so. And I would, I would add that, and, and I would add that we need to create a, a, a more, a safer and more pedestrian-friendly way to cross Route 3A, not as a flyover, but utilizing a, a number of, of things that are utilized in other cities and towns, including wider crosswalks, better signalization, you know, whatever, but, but, but means to do that. Does that, does that sum up most of it? Do we have more that we want to put in there?
That'd be good.
That sounds good.
Does that kind of cover the general, okay.
Anybody here have anything to add?
You guys are pretty quiet.
I have one, I have one question. Is, did anyone look at flyovers, bridges, tunnels, anything that's, that sure would be a nice thing to work piece of?
We have. We actually looked at it at length a few years ago, Jerry. The issue was the length of how long, once you do the flyovers, and then the, you have to come down around and how much it would take on, on either side was.
Too long, which is.
Because of the ADA and all, that we had to, you have to, you know, have it a certain incline and a certain, you know, and that thing. I forgot one other thing, and that was to encourage control and management of the geese populations. Throw that in there. Okay, so, I know, and I realize we've been at this for a while, what I think we'd like to do is probably finish within the next half an hour or so. Is that, are we good with this?
I think we're good.
I mean, I don't, I don't know how long your meetings usually go. I mean, we could sit here and talk about this for another hour or so, but I, and I, and we can. I mean, I have no problem with it. It's, it's completely up to you, but let me know. The others we still have to cover.
Can I say this, I think our goal is to get your input on the master plan, right? So if you, rather than go through every page of this, line by line.
Yeah, we're not, we're not.
If you guys could just sort of go to where you think, you know, the, the high priority areas are.
So the next, the next areas that we had were the Route 3A corridor we need, we need to talk about, and then very briefly touch on maybe Hingham Center, and then South Hingham, leaving South Hingham for last because we might have some, some real discussion on that. So I guess the, the, the Route 3A corridor, which has, over the last several, you see in the, in the current master plan, a lot of this stuff was not brought up. I think what Mary did here was she included everything in here that this, Mary, you didn't necessarily intend for us to discuss public facilities and everything and all. We were really discussing, we're discussing the economic development aspects of things. So some of this, you know, it's interesting, I think Greg's right, when you talk about a master plan, sometimes, you know, you need to drill down, too, and, and we didn't always do that in, in our, in our master plans. But, but certainly the 3A corridor has changed dramatically since we, we started this, this last master plan. You know, in, in the last seven years or so, you know, we've seen the complete change on, of the shipyard area. We've seen a, a, a complete change in the Anchor Plaza area. When I say that, it's, it's that the, the longtime tenants and all in that plaza.
Went to the shipyard.
Went to the shipyard, and totally different types of, of tenants are down there now. There has been a tremendous increase to traffic in the corridor, and residential has increased as well as commercial in that area. So I guess going forward, I, I would like suggestions, or I think we should have suggestions on what we need, how we need to manage this going forward, so it doesn't, it doesn't reach a tipping point in terms of development.
Well, what kinds of uses do you want to see on 3A?
So, does anyone want to something there? So historically, historically, 3A has, has been a melting pot of your, your restaurants, gas stations, pharmacies, grocery stores.
Washing.
Kind of, kind of everything in there.
Products have been there forever.
It was a, it was a truly, you know, I, you know, if, if we have anything that's kind of like Route 1, you know, that's, that's been it, you know? And, and I would say that we have not spent a lot of time managing that corridor and just allowed the market to regulate itself, which is, I'm not saying is a bad thing. What I, what I, what I would say is that the increased traffic in that area has, I think necessitates us taking a close look at, going forward at the intersection of Downer Avenue and Thaxter Street and 3A, which gets tremendously backed up every day. If you're, if you're trying to get through there anytime between four o'clock and six o'clock in the afternoon, you are backed up for a minimum of three to four light cycles. I think that's something we need to look at going forward, just that that's, that's a major.
I don't know what you can do about that. So that's a product of your own success with the shipyard, with the.
Well, it's a key area, yeah.
But if I said that, Eileen, to the people of downtown Hingham, that it's a product of our nice streets, that, that we have people who are driving through to get to, you know, Weth and all that, no one would accept that.
Well, it, it exists on Cushing Street. Any place you have that kind of, those numbers, you know, I don't, I mean, what else would you attribute that kind of activity to, except the commuter boat, basically?
I think, I think what I, what I guess I would be recommending is a, is a, is a traffic study that would look at the light cycles and the lights that are there, and, and more effectively manage at peak times and all the, the flow.
I think Mr. Cook could add to that.
Hey, Cook. Route 3A is an ancient highway, and great deal of development has occurred off of it over the years. Its problems are that its right of way is too narrow to widen the lanes or create turning things. The intersection that we refer to is a five approach intersection, and it's at its capacity at this moment in time, and there's no way of correcting it without taking city building and lots of property, and still you would have a lesser problem, but still a problem. So development off of Route 3A in the future has got to be limited to something that reduces traffic from maybe another property or a specific property. But there isn't a lot of commercial activity. It's, it's not. It's not just the shipyard. There's the strip development that runs along the waterside all the way from the far road down to the Waymouth Town Line.
And we did look at this. Were you in that zoning study committee? There was a zoning study committee a few years ago. You were in that committee, right? And we did look at the properties along 3A that could have potentially hosted another shipyard, right, that were for corporate headquarters, for example, with a lot of acreage. And we did make moves to restrict the zoning somewhat so that there couldn't be another special permit for that type of mixed-use development on those properties.
The mixed-use overlay is for the industrial properties, and that basically was the old shipyard plus Talbot's property on the opposite side of 3A. And in looking at the available land at Talbot's, if somebody were to decide to go through a mixed-use special permit, they wouldn't have sufficient land in order to accomplish that. They would have to basically combine all of the properties there, zone the industrial and market that occur. And I think our conclusion was that that wasn't the likelihood, so we didn't make any recommendations.
We also received pretty strong objections from Talbot's, too. Remember that, Dick? We talked about zoning changes with respect to that property, and the owners objected very strongly to what we were trying to do. So, we, the committee withdrew its recommendation.
So, in theory, if Talbot's were to turn over at some point, you could end up with something that has a significantly greater impact on?
Traffic.
That's not going to happen because of the mixed-use requirements. There's no way that anybody could justify a mixed-use development of all that land to the landside of Route 3A because of traffic impacts, because of water demands, because of sewage. The capacity is not there to be able to handle any increased development.
I know, Dick, we're talking about a mixed-use development and what that would bring, but I don't know that it has to be a mixed-use development to cause a huge amount of traffic on the corridor. Certainly, just a changeover from what was at Anchor Plaza, you know, the Talbets and the Old Navy, to some of the use now, which is the Planet Fitness and all, there's a lot more in-and-out traffic. That's, I'm not.
Well, I think your point is well taken on Route 3A, on, you know, how could we think about improving the safety, you know, of entrance and egress from the sites on 3A? And maybe there's an opportunity, as sites are redeveloped, to look at certain intersections, to change the timing of the lights, to put in new lights.
Right.
But I'm not sure that there's one particular place that we would see.
My thought process in that, in some of it, was that if we took a good, hard look at the timing and the intervals of the lights and all going down, there are, I believe, five lights between when you hit the Hingham line to that intersection at Thaxter and down.
A little over mile, maybe?
Right. And, you know, one is, should lights be, should they be trigger lights? Should they be, you know, should they be triggered by cross-street traffic as opposed to just interval lights? One thing that was changed in the recent years that is very successful is that if you're coming south on 3A, you have a green arrow that allows you to enter into Crow Point for, it's literally three cars, it's three car lengths, okay, before the people coming northbound can go. That has made a significant difference in not backing up traffic quite as much because it allows two lanes to flow rather than the one lane sitting there waiting for the turn signal. Dick, I don't know if you would agree with me on that, but it has made a difference. And I don't know if, things like that, things that, but I think it requires someone looking at it.
Are we still on the look back on the shipyard? Or has that passed? Do you know, Dick?
That should be gone by. I hadn't followed that, being in retirement. I was, my firm did the engineering work on name shipyard. And so, I'm pretty familiar with the traffic operation along Route 3A.
I feel like we have another look back because of that to do with buildout.
Those signals are synchronized, which means that the availability of dominant traffic is going to get a progression to go through the red lights. So, that's westbound in the morning and westbound in the afternoon. But again, the problem along that corridor is the downer part of the road intersection. That's where the greatest congestion occurs and where the most accidents are.
Sue, to make a recommendation is that, I think one of the constant themes I keep hearing, which is funny, it's not really a common development behind it, which is pedestrian development. I think it's a whole lot of things to go out now, because I think some of the issues you're addressing right now, the traffic, you and I live every day, or if you could actually get from downtown to the shipyard, you would probably more likely walk rather than get in a car. If you could get from Crow Point or Back River or Weathervein or any of those neighborhoods that have the new developments going on over there, and if people could get to the shipyard and get to the boat or ice cream over there, they would be lucky to get in a car. But right now, there's not the sidewalk capacity, it's not friendly enough to be useful.
So, as far as our master plan goes, that would be a?
So, I think a mark of master.
Like a goal that would kind of go to?
Promoting connectivity from the shipyard to the neighborhoods, into the downtown.
Sidewalks on Lincoln Street are good enough, but you're right, once you cross over Lincoln Street onto 3A, I mean, you're literally right on the road with those sidewalks. I mean, they're narrow. If you're on a bike or get a stroller or something like that, you're going to be really close to traffic. It's not.
And then maybe some other way, I know there are other ways to get to the shipyard from my neighborhood, maybe getting onto the sidewalk. There may be some open parcels, or maybe some use of some things that are going to take place, maybe promoting, I know we're getting to the grid, but are there impact fees that developers should be paying? Are there incentives for them to promote the connectivity of the internal development that they could get to other areas such as Park or other places?
Right, like you could argue that 3A is not necessarily a pedestrian road, and that to get from the shipyard, to the shipyard from downtown, you should go North Street to Beale Street and then cross over. I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying this as a belief, I'm just saying that that's something that, right, do we think that 3A should be a pedestrian-friendly road? I mean, I could, you know.
Practically, the only difference with that, though, is if you're going to go North to Beale, so you're going to go all the way around and then come back down.
It's going to be twice as long.
Certainly safer and a better way to walk. You're going to come all the way down and come back around, so.
But you know what I'm saying? Or you could go, what am I saying, you could go Thaxter.
Go Thaxter, walk down, yeah.
How many bike racks are at the shipyard?
There are some.
How many? Five, or 10, or 15?
Oh, more like 10 to 15.
That'd be a requirement for future development, you know, where they are putting more, you know, throughout California, different weather, but, you know, to replace the park or the boat and go on, there's probably not that accessibility.
Right. So, maybe just an overarching goal to connect our transportation centers and our commercial centers with pedestrian, pedestrian and bike-friendly sidewalks and, yeah.
That way, we don't necessarily decide whether we think 3A should be pedestrian-friendly or not, but that there should be pedestrian-friendly routes.
To get from, to these major kind of places.
Exactly. Back to the traffic issue, though. So, are we just saying that, oh, well? I don't mean that. I don't mean that.
But I don't think we're looking at tactics right now for exactly how to do this, but if you wanted to say our goal is to, you know, continue to improve as development happens or something like that, you know.
I think we need, I guess I think we need to look very carefully at the traffic, and that may not even be us. That may be that we need to have the state look more carefully, you know, because it is a state road.
Well, it triggers NEPA, but I think, Dick, I would tell you that. If it's getting a state road that triggers that much traffic, we'll have to go through a much stricter approval process, not here, but the state level, through the NEPA process, where you're going to intervene and make those cases. You can't, if it's failing intersections, you need to be able to address that issue through your impact.
Because, you know, I mean, look at the Harbor Light Mall. If the Harbor Light Mall has, you know, next year, stores that, say, one store goes out and a store comes in that has a significant, say, a Target went in, where?
Lowe's is or?
Not Lowe's, where Michael's is, or where, you know, some Staples. So, now, the traffic impact on 3A is tremendous, you know? And I don't think that it can take that much more in terms of capacity.
That's, that's the way that's right.
Yeah, just over the line. So, we can't affect that. I guess my question is just, I guess maybe in the master plan, what I would like to see as a recommendation is that we pay very close attention to the capacity level of Route 3A in our future zoning and planning.
Well, for instance, I was just, I wanted to go in where the, remember, we looked at the site where the boat, where the boatyard is. I mean, are you proposing to say that, I think there already is a square foot limit for grocery stores in that area, and are you wanting to stand that, you know, box limit to limit the size of stores that could go potentially along 3A corridor to Target or build up 26 boxes?
I think, I think that, the recommendation that I make, that we need to consider that in our zoning and planning for the future, we need to consider the impacts of developments on the traffic on Route 3A specifically, because it is close to capacity would be.
Mary, I would just ask you if you could find out, I don't know if I said this already, if you could find out if the shipyard is still within their look-back period for their traffic on 3A?
I feel, I was just thinking about it, that it, no, no, because it had to do with buildout, 50%, 75%.
And they're not built out because they haven't built those buildings.
So, I don't know where they are in the buildout, but I think we could look at it anyway and say, look, it's taken you longer than we thought for you to build out, and we need to look at this.
Yeah, I'd love to trigger that.
I think we thought it would be 10 years since.
Yeah.
Can I do that?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I guess I, was a similar question, you know, what happens? Like, what's the goal for the properties where, like, Building 19 is? I mean, that's a huge space, and it's also not necessarily the most attractive space, but do we have thoughts about what usage we'd want in that kind of area when and if that ever comes open or up? Is that something that we want to talk about or that we should talk about as part of the plan? Like, should that be open space, I mean, in terms of driving people there? Or, I mean, maybe that's connected to traffic. I wasn't thinking about concept of traffic.
Right, well, and Greg said it, so if a big box store is allowed to go there, the impact on 3A will be tremendous.
I mean, I think, Sue, unfortunately, traffic studies would tell you that the capacity of Route 3A is not maxed out. It's got a lot more to go. I mean, that's what we learn again and again, where we think, gosh, this can't handle another piece of development. And in fact, the traffic engineers say, oh, yeah, no, it can, and more.
For sure.
Yeah, yeah, this and more.
There was a, there's a traffic engineering group in Boston that, with a lot of work that they do.
Did they say no?
We refer to whatever as no significant impact.
Yeah.
Because I've never seen a development that got done that has a significant impact. It wasn't your group, Dick. Just kidding.
So, if you, if you look at the limited area we have for commercial development, which is 3A, 53.
South Hingham.
I mean, that, and they're both four-lane highways. Sometimes they go down to two, but the point is, can we, or do we want to, looking at it from a development standpoint, want to limit it? I mean, we have pretty good zoning laws now that would apply to a lot of those parcels. They're not, not all of them are huge, and they would have to comply with certain things anyway. I just, I don't know. I think we have to be careful about what restrictions we would encourage over there when there's such limited commercial space that we have.
I would agree, with my economic development hat on, I would agree that as someone who lives in that area and has seen over the last 25 years the difficulty with which it is to navigate that area, and yet then we look at other areas of Hingham where we, you know, and we've looked at putting fields in somewhere, and you've got people that say, oh, we can't put that in there because the traffic impact on a road will be this, or we can't do something over Derby Street shops unless something else happens because of that. I feel that 3A has become the forgotten, like, the, anything that doesn't fit anywhere else can sort of go on there.
Well, I would only remind you that when the shipyard was built, there were extensive improvements to Route 3A, to the traffic, to the traffic lights, to the lanes, to the lighting. I mean, just really, we could go on and on about that and to Beale Street, both. So, to say that we haven't looked at 3A, you know, since the shipyard was built, I would say.
Right.
I do think the timing seems like a relatively simple thing to ask for a look at that. We revisit the shipyard and some concerns with it on Monday, we can, we can talk about that. I think it's, that timing issue is a very, it could be a relatively simple thing that has a significant fix. Maybe not, you know? Maybe they'll say, oh, it is, already timed.
But that's a.
Well, I think that's what Dick's saying, is that it's timed.
Yeah, but weather's timed with the current traffic issues.
Timing goes off kilter, too, and if no one's paying attention to it.
If the traffic increases, timing goes off the kilter. So, that's what I think.
So, I don't want to belabor it because I do, right, exactly. So.
But is the goal, maybe one goal is to address traffic issues within the master plan, and the goal is to review and address traffic issues within the 3A corridor?
Well, and that way, at least if that's part of the master plan, then if there is a proposal for redevelopment of the Building 19 or of the Talbets, then I think the ZBA would have to take a closer look at the traffic because that was part of the master plan. So, I think it is wise to.
And I do think the improvements that were done as part of the shipyard were very good. Don't misunderstand me in that.
Well, no, we're going to try to get them to do another look back now.
That would be, okay, so let's, if everyone's still willing to go for a little while longer, let's do South Hingham. Does that sound good? Okay, South Hingham. Obviously, so let's say when we're talking about South Hingham, we're talking about the commercial industrial area from Queen Anne's Corner up through the Derby Street corridor, going up to the. Street Corridor, going up to the industrial park. Is that fair to, to go on that? Obviously, HDIC has, has been focusing on the industrial park, South Shore Park, over the last couple of years, and we have, we are in the process of applying for the 43D status for this, from the state, to allow for expedited permitting, which we passed through town meeting a year and a half ago. We expect that, that to go into, that application to go in within the next couple of weeks. And we have looked at that as being a, a, that that will be a huge asset going forward in terms of economic development of the park and potential grants for infrastructure improvements in that area of town. So I guess the recommendation going forward would be to, to, to utilize our 43D status if and when we, we are approved to apply, to, to apply for infrastructure grants through the state, to, to use our status in that, to apply for grants that can assist us with infrastructure improvements.
That would apply to the whole corridor?
Actually, we can apply, it actually, it actually applies to the entire town.
So even though the 40--
No, the 43D?
The 43D--
The 43D, the 43D grant, mass works grants and things like that. So what happens is, you, you get preferred status in, when you're applying for certain grants, like mass works grants, infrastructure grants and all, when you, when you are a 40, when you have a 43D site in your town. But you don't have to use those grants in that 43D site, or even in that corridor. You can use it--
Anywhere you want.
Townwide.
Yeah, great.
So I think we should, you know, in, in our master plan, that should be something we take full advantage of in order to spur infrastructure improvements in town, but I would also go so far as to say specifically in the South Shore Derby Street Corridor.
You mean South Hingham?
South Hingham Derby Street Corridor.
Yeah, the only concern I have is that, I know the town is obviously, the planning board, we got a proposal on, from the town engineer about improvements in the corridor and things like that. And I think we need to be wary of is that the, you know, there's going to be a big parcel, parcel up there that's going to be developed. So as the town moves forward, moves forward with its proposed improvements, whatever they are, whatever they may be, need to be able to accommodate what potentially could be a pretty large size development. So, but my concern would be is that the town makes significant improvements up there, which are for the betterment of the corridor, but then, boom, we have a big development that goes in, and the parcel up there that we, you know, the Bristol parcel we've been talking about, and we realize, wow, those improvements that we made are not adequate enough to support a larger development now. So I think we need to be cautious that both go hand in hand together as we do that.
Well, it's exactly what we were talking about when Aquarian came and talked to us and did the big picture. Have you folks heard of that yet?
No, and actually, that, that was, they were supposed to be the first, the first part of our discussion tonight. They could not, John Walsh was out of town. They are looking to see if they can have a discussion with you all on, on November 4th, at, at, at your meeting on November 4th, if they could, if they could come in for 15 minutes to half an hour and give you this presentation, which--
It became very clear to us, or it gave us pause and concern, that as these entities were coming forth, like the car dealership, Bristol, and all of that, the bigger picture is, as you try to accommodate those entities, and then you, you bring in the infrastructure or what have you, and then there's another one that comes along, and another one, and we have to go back and undo what was done there, and should we be looking at this in a, in a much larger picture? I think that's what we came away with. It, it was almost scary to the extent, Irma Lotta was there at the time, and she kind of had the same impression that as we talk about South Hingham, this is not a small little car dealership or office building that we're talking about. You know, we should be looking at it maybe differently. I, I would not even begin to know how you do that, but it gave, the discussion went, should we have individual engineers looking at this? How are we going to approach that in the South Hingham area?
And the selectmen have formed, as of last week, a, a study committee, I think it's actually called the South Hingham Study Committee, under the auspices of the, of the selectmen, to actually do that, to, to look at it, I want to say, I guess, holistically, rather than incrementally, in terms of that, because one of the things we saw from this, from this Aquarian presentation on is that, you know, our town, town, well, you know, is, 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 in the next 20 years, will be over capacity, just with current develop, current things on the table, not even what we are looking at potentially building out for. Now, that's their presentation, is that, you know, I mean, we don't, you know--
So how do they tell us in letters that they are fine with water? If they're telling us now that in 20 years, they don't have water? I'm confused by--
Well, they're, they're not necessarily saying that, well, in a way, they're saying they don't have water, but they're talking about the tank. They have a holding tank and the maintenance of that, and there were like three different ways that they would do the big picture, and, and you would have three options and three expenses on how this would happen, improving the size of the pipes, improving, you know, and having, the cost of painting the tank, things, it all, it broke down that way. So, again, it was, I couldn't even tell you the whole thing, but you have to hear it.
You'd have to see the whole, the whole, the whole presentation, but, but essentially, they, they said, you know, it will be over, it's not allowed to be over capacity, and it will be over capacity. And, and that's without a buildout of the industrial park, and a buildout of Bristol Brothers, and a whole. So for us, it was--
Well, it would be alarming to me as well, because I feel like we have been asking Aquarian for letters, saying we have enough water for this development to go forward. They have been giving us those letters, we've been asking questions, they've been saying we're fine. And now, it sounds to me like you're saying Aquarian is saying, well, we're fine for now until 20 years, which really isn't a long term--
Right.
--but not for much longer than that.
Right, exactly. We're, we are fine for the moment.
That's scary.
Exactly.
Very scary.
So we're not, we're not trying to plan out for five years, 10 years, or even 20 years, we're trying to plan out for 50 years, you know, so that we know that we have capacity.
Hundreds of years, I would hope.
Right. The, you know, same thing is true with our sewer, sewer treatment plants, and, and, you know, what we're gonna, what we're gonna do there. We've, we've purchased various pieces of property. The question is, you know, what goes on each one? Do we use multiple ones? Do we do, and it comes back down to not what our capacity, what our, what our needs are today, but what our needs are several years from now. So I think that, my understanding is that the study committee will, will take each piece of, of this, and, and bring in other individuals and experts and things and all to help with each piece of it, to, so that at the end of the day, the recommendations are--
By each, each piece, you mean like traffic, water, sewer?
Exactly. Traffic, water, sewer, lights, infrastructure, things, is my, is my understanding. Does anyone have a different understanding of that? So I guess our recommendation would be, who's taking down with, as, where Mary's left is one--
Well, it's Talbets.
She's gonna, yeah, she said she's gonna look at the table.
That's right.
She had to go.
So I guess the recommendation would be that, that, that we need to look holistically at all of these improvements, and, and, holistically at our needs and our, and our, our requirements, not for, I'm deciding how to phrase this.
I think it has to do with our growth in that area, to do a, an educated approach to the growth up there, is how I would perceive it.
Ruth Richard, I think you mentioned, I touched on that, we were talking about 3A corridor, maybe there's elaborate that they have some background knowledge on some of the industry competitive challenges.
Well, I, it's very difficult to comment on now, because there's, you know, especially for an engineer, there's not enough information on the table to make some decisions. We know with every development, there are times you can have a shortage of water and sewer, and the real question is, does the town have, or others have the capacity to provide for those needs in the future? And right now, we're talking about improvements to very straight, we're talking about the water company finding a new source of water, we're talking about a new sewer treatment plant. I don't know what the capacities of those are, and so it's difficult to say whether or not you can comment.
From a master plan perspective, understanding the infrastructure needs, because the committee even was listening to Mary talk about some of the obstacles in downtown redevelopment, or obviously the cost components to it, and it may be costly. If it is, or if we want to see South Shore Parks and other parts develop to create more ratables, we need to create some, make some more new policies in place to help developers accomplish this goal.
Well, and to help the town finance the infrastructure--
Right.
--needs, and we have one tool in place in our Town Hingham Overlay District, but it needs to be reexamined in the context of the infrastructure needs.
And I thi, and I think if we're, if we're, you know, pulling back and looking at the overarching goals down there, you know, it is that where, and Eileen, you hit it on the head a little while ago, that it is our area of, of commercial growth in town. So we would, you know, HDIC obviously would like to see in the master plan that, you know, economic growth in terms of, in the, in the industrial park itself, it is commercial, it is, you know, under, underutilized, and, and has the potential for greater commercial growth, and we would like, in the master plan, to see a concerted effort towards assisting that, 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 that growth to--
What goal?
First, I mean, tax base, get greater revenue, you know?
I think, I think--
But also, how about jobs?
I think it's a curious question, though, yeah, like, are we looking for retail?
Yeah.
Looking for office parks, you know, what's the goal of this park? Is it pharmaceutical research, laboratories, helping grow the healthcare sector, all the above?
I'm, I'm, I'm someone who tends to believe that the market dictates what goes there. I don't think, five years ago, if you'd said that medical, it could be a medical stronghold, any of us would have put that in the master plan, because it wasn't, you know, it was, most of the businesses over there were industrial, whether it was printing or steel fabrication or, or electrical components, you know, more industrial. And, and it's interesting, because this is, this is something that, that I, that I deal with a lot, and that is the changing, the changing look of, of light manufacturing and small business and, and that kind of thing. And heck, now you've got, you've got technology companies out there that are very different. We've got, we've now got a distillery in the industrial park that, you know, five years ago, you know, you wouldn't have thought of a distillery going in the park, and, and now, that's a huge business. There's a lot that, you know, microbreweries, I mean, that are industrial businesses. So would I, but at the same time, we would not have thought of the bone and muscle center being there.
I know, but I think what Greg is saying is, you know, you have the Derby Street Shops, which is a big retail component. Is that something that we want more of? Or we have light industrial, as you said, and there's a lot of things that go in light industrial, but then there's also, you know, heavier types of things. So, you know, right, we have changed the zoning, or the zoning exists right now, so that it limits really the use to light industrial. Is that sort of the vision that you have in mind?
I would think what it is now, because I think there's potential growth, I mean, in that, you know--
We're comfortable with the zoning as it is now.
Right. In the park.
In the park.
In the park.
What is, what is the question, or is it over in the park?
It's light industrial commercial, but not retail.
Right.
Would it be a hotel in there to service, a lot of times you'll see office parks being serviced by a hotel to support conferences and meetings?
Is that prohibited in the zoning there?
We don't have specific zoning for hotels as far as I know, but I think early in our conversation, we thought we would look at inns, a provision for inns in South Hingham and in the--
Right.
Give it a big spot for it.
Right.
Well, we, overlay, we're sorry.
In the two overlay districts.
And, you know, I think, Judy, in that, we have to not just limit our discussion to inns and, and breakfast, but we should also have the discussion about a hotel. So that should, all three should be, should be, because you're right, you're right, Greg.
My Quincy is for that reason, and then I came back, because of that reason.
You're right. The question is, would we?
Convention center, hotel, are those uses that would be complementary to office industrial?
Or like, or like headquarters, I mean--
Expos, yeah, an expo kind of place.
Rockland has a large pharma headquarters, I mean, that, you know, that's the kind of thing that draws immense, immense, you know, draw to the terms of, you know, lunch business and usage down there, you know, and I don't know if that changes the zoning, if that's just commercial or not, but--
Yeah, I think that's allowed, like, we have Blue Cross, Blue Shield is under that zoning, and--
So it's general, okay.
Although they've changed what they use it for, but, you know, we have--
But, but up in our park, again, it always goes back to the sewer that you, and, you know, and secondly, the water.
Right.
But sewer more than anything for something like a convention center or a hotel.
But you could push that onto them when they come and develop, I mean, that's not, that's exactly the point, you know?
But I think to your point, so, and I think it's part of the course to understand the infrastructure, that if the infrastructure costs X, and our zoning only allows, say, industrial, which is only for a ratable, and raise a certain level, it may, it may conflict each other, you have to apply additional resources, and help--
I'm wondering in the discussions, have we been talking with organizations in Rockland and Hanover and Norwell, for example, you know, oftentimes, we look at the industrial park area, Derby Street Car, and we look at it as the south end of Hingham, but it's actually the center of, you know, the budding towns, you know, and Hingham, it's a different kind of a view, point, and I'm wondering, have we talked with them, and what are their goals, and how do they fit into this process? Because they would potentially, you know, we have had a number of shared developments, Sirona is one, where the mini BMW dealership that's in Rockland and--
Blue Cross, Blue Shield.
Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and I'm just wondering--
I went to the doctor out there by, was it Pond, in terms of, you know, the office park that we developed over there by, by Harber's-- park that we developed over there by, there are three or four different new office parks that are in that area that's in Norwell. But if you're, want to stay isolated, you know, when I moved to town 10 years ago, I stayed at the Holiday, which is now I think Fort Motta or something, but the quality of hotels on that side of town that we need are very limited, it really doesn't matter how many people are.
So, Gary, you bring up a good point, this, there's, you know, you're right, up and down the corridor, there were different things going on. You know, people would argue, you know, that the Derby Street Shops have certainly become a, the premier shopping area from Plymouth to Braintree and beyond. I mean, the far-reaching, you know...
Is Apple.
Kate Spade is REI.
Is coming.
Perspective, huh?
So, and so, which begs the question, are we, would we promote more retail? I think, I think we're comfortable right now with the zoning that is down there. I think that one caveat that should always be in the master plan is that while we are promoting commercial and industrial development in that area, it should always be with the focus on not creating negative impact to the residential population in that area. And I think, I think that should be something that is always in our master plan, that, you know, I think, I think there's always, there's always impact with development. I just, I just think that we need to, we need to make sure that we are cognizant of...
The other thing that I noticed in terms of impacts of new development, when Derby Shops came in, and that's on a triple net basis, when Derby Shops came in, it basically changed the face of the smaller retail within a certain radius. And so, smaller developments were basically transitioning to the kind of rent structure, not as much as Derby Shops, but it was all triple net. And they didn't have that before. So, when you look at Queen Anne's Corner, I was on discussion with Brian Noble as to why he moved from Queen Anne's Corner, because I lived near there and I thought it was a group, I always went to that store. And he said, it's the rent structure, it's the triple net, the mom and pops can't afford the locally owned businesses, can't afford to rent in the triple net districts. We lost the hardware store for the same reason, at Montwooduck Hardware Store, same reason. And those are, to me, critical businesses that are really nice for a community, and so our alternatives are big blocks if they go. So, I'm thinking in terms of thinking through the impacts of the kind of development that we would like to see. I think we should look at the impact on all the other businesses that are around it, because it's definitely a huge change in the character.
It actually crept down to the center, the same thing happened. When the landlord came in, he immediately adopted that same philosophy, as what, not quite what they're getting up there, obviously, but substantial increase. It's what the market...
Isn't the square a lot triple net as well?
Well, yeah.
I mean, I think, I think much of the square's triple net leases as well. It's sort of become more the norm.
More the norm, but it also brings, I think, I don't know if the parallel exists in the square, but the smaller locally owned businesses, where they put under more pressure and thereby can't survive under that structure as much.
I think that's what you've seen in the last number of years. It just makes it harder.
I mean, Derby Street takes it that much further with percentage of sales. Luckily, things haven't gotten to that point.
Well, and the interesting thing, and Greg and I had this conversation the other day, and, you know, he had asked the question, you know, why, why are there minimal chains in downtown Hingham? And it tends to be the smaller store, the independently owned store. Some of that is a function of the size of the stores, you know, that chains are looking for a greater traffic and greater revenues than the size of the properties can do down there. But Gary, I think part of what you're talking about is that, what happens is then you've got descents that goes in, not in Derby Street, but down the street, and they can, because now they can buy that property, they can put this themselves there, and now you're getting another bigger type store, chain store, you know, and it's further on down the corridor and as the price is going, because it's what the market will bear, because you want to be near the ones that are successful, so you keep going and going, and it's pricing the others out. And I don't know if that's something that is in a town's purview to determine.
Well, I do think most of our conversation around the 43D and around the infrastructure has to do with large-scale development from Cushing Street towards the Weymouth line. And there's a big question concerning the economic development from Cushing Street towards Queen Anne's Corner in that that is really still a mixed zoning area. A lot of those properties are still zoned residential, and there has been pressure on the town, on this board certainly over the last few years, to rezone two of those properties with, you know, sort of with the thinking that they're adjacent to these other commercial areas. So, if I were to ask for something in the master plan, it would be for guidance on that section of Whiting Street, I guess it is, not Derby Street.
Right.
Is it?
From Cushing down to...
Whiting Street is from Duck and Donuts up to Queen Anne's. That's Whiting.
Right. And so, I would say Whiting Street is a street that we don't often talk about. We talk about Derby Street. And there's that portion of Derby Street from Cushing to Whiting. But, so I think, starting at Cushing, going east to Queen Anne's Corner, there's some open questions. And how firmly are we committed to retaining all of the residentially zoned properties on that street? And is it consistent with the rest of the street? So, although we want to use those properties as buffers for the residential neighborhoods behind those two, there are people on those streets that are sort of, their properties have kind of been rendered not useless, but they're not really great as residential properties anymore, and they're not usable as commercial properties. So, is there something that we want to think about as far as making that transition?
One caution I would have for you in that regard is the same thinking can apply to 3A.
Right.
And you're talking about 3A being busy. If you take out the residential on 3A and add that into your commercial or other zoning, look at the impact you will have then.
Right.
It's the same, it's Pandora's Box.
I think you raised a good point that should be addressed in the master plan is the guidance of the transition.
Right.
And I think you take a point, and there are some other communities around the country. And one comes to mind, where I used to live was down in Arlington, Virginia, there are three or four main corridors that come out of both of Washington DC, that they have, on the main corridors, they have very high density, that's more urban environment, but as soon as you get three or four blocks off the main corridors, you do a very good job of stepping it down to a plant where you're in full residential neighborhood, with five block of urban core. And it'd be interesting to see how, what policies that they enacted.
I think it would be interesting to look at, because I wonder if there isn't kind of an office park or some kind of limitations that could be put on some of those really very effective residential properties on those busy streets, so that at least the property owner has some flexibility for what they can do with that property without affecting, you know, the abutting residences. And I'm certainly not advocating for rezoning the whole thing, you know, retail or anything like that, but I feel that there are property owners along that stretch that have been adversely affected by the success further down, and it's kind of a town issue.
One of the things about the character of Whiting Street and the business B zoning, where we have the development, the retail development, is that the intersections are at the crossroads of, for example, Queen Anne's Corner, or, you know, Gardner and Whiting and Derby. You know, that, having those kinds of business localized within the intersection area, one could might look at a mixed-use kind of a zoning there, where you could have residential over the business, or you could have a combined, where you wouldn't have such a stark change to just retail or commercial, which to me sets a different tone. And also, I agree with you on the amount of traffic generated. I'm thinking maybe that's a smarter kind of an approach, you know, when we think of smart growth and things like that. Instead of doing wholesale, changes of zoning, take a look at what makes the area healthy and what's the balance, what the good balance is now, and is there a way we can help that balance improve, so it can grow in a way that it's more consistent or more naturally patterned, rather than impose a larger pattern or a different density of development on it, which I think might compromise the integrity, because it is the gateway of the town. The other concern that I, that one of the things, we look at a lot of the development in the Derby Street corridor, and, you know, everything is vehicle dependent, everything's car dependent. We don't really have any alternative transportation opportunities in place right now. And I'm wondering, you know, and this is where the other towns might come into play, you know, in Weymouth, we have a commuter rail station over at the new, at the air station. We have the commuter rail stations in West Hingham, and we have, you know, I'm just thinking, there are two commuter rail stations that could have a lateral connection on some kind of another alternative transportation, public transportation basis, which would give you an alternative to having to use a car for every single access trip to these developments. And I'm wondering if that isn't something that could be done as a consortium with the other towns, where we could say, you know, you could have an increased amount of development, but it wouldn't come at the price of the, you know, the congestion and choking with the vehicles, you know. And I don't know if that's anything that's been discussed, or whether it's anything that's on the table, but...
We did discuss, we did discuss that earlier, the need for that connection between different transportation modes, and that the MBTA has it on their radar, but doesn't seem to be moving on it right now. Am I stating that correctly, Sue?
Yeah. And that, right, it might, and that regionally, you know, it may, it may be a good idea to see how we can leverage our connections there.
It was quite a few years ago that we experimented with the bus going up and down Main Street, I mean, many, many years ago. I don't know if that is something that bears discussion with regard to even just going down 53 or going down 3A, and going back to what Mary said about the towns kind of, you know, getting involved, a district kind of thing.
I think the thing, one thing we have to look at is, you know, what are we as a community? I mean, we are a community of cars, I mean, unfortunately, I mean, I shouldn't say unfortunately, but, you know, sometimes, you know, it's not always that, you know, if you bring a horse to water, that they'll drink. And we found that out, you know, in, if you look at even the ridership on the 220 bus and things like that, you can theoretically, you can get from downtown Hingham into downtown Boston in 35 minutes by bus and tea, or by train. And yet, significantly, the numbers are, you know, way over on the side of the people that still continue to drive and spend, you know, Fortune Parking.
Or use the boat.
Or use the boat. But, well, but I'm saying, right, well, but, but even, even, even given the boat and the rail and the, and the bus altogether, the significant numbers that still drive.
True.
That has a lot to do with getting to the west part of the city, probably, you know. That has a lot to do with getting west into the city, I think, as opposed to being, you know, the boat and the rail, and you bring you to the same location essentially, you know, more or less. And the bus does bring you west, but there's not a great western option.
But there's not a great western option.
That's a good point.
I'm wondering, looking down the road, you know, I notice on the commuter rail the patterns of the ridership, when gasoline's over $4, all of a sudden, there's no seats on the train.
Right.
And I think that there's, I'm just thinking, looking 10, 20 years down the road, you know, if gas is $8 a gallon, and we're planning a development around cars, even though that is the current pattern of use, I know that, I'm just thinking, looking 10 or 20 years down the road, hey, will there be so much vehicle demand and congestion, you know? Derby Street corridor now is, I don't know how many vehicles a day, 20-something thousand a day, and if you double the development there and it's 30,000, you know, is, is it, does it become a gridlock? Does it become a choke point, which discourages people from going there? And then also, how do we plan for, you know, ultimately, I don't see that, you know, long term, I don't see vehicle-based growth as being sustainable economically, I just don't think people will.
I think the only thing is, Gary, that if you were, if there were to be some sort of a shuttle system or a bus system, it has to be a system that runs continuously and frequently, because I don't think that, given the nature of people, there is a, and there are actual models of this, of how long people would be willing to wait. It's sort of like how far they're willing to walk, if you, when we did the models for downtown of how far, or the Derby Street Shops, how far they're willing to walk from a parking space and all, how far they, how long they're willing to wait for a shuttle to come to pick them up is, you know, proportionate to whether they would drive or not to where they're going. You know, if I live, if I live in downtown Hingham, and there's a bus that runs to Derby Street every 20 minutes, I'm likely to take it. But if there's a bus that runs every hour or hour and a half, I'm not likely to, because if I finish my shopping 55 minutes into it.
Sue, Sue, I think to your point, from the master plan perspective, we're looking 20 years out, right?
Right.
So, in order for Hingham to be competitive, we need, we're talking to, we're addressing wishes and wants and needs and positioning Hingham for people who are 10, 15 years old.
You're right.
Completely different generation. I think if you look at that generation, I mean, it's playing out into 20-somethings now, they are much more focused on public transportation, much more focused on living near where they work and being able to, you know, they're looking for smaller homes. There are a whole set of needs that I would like to see addressed in our master plan that says, okay, we're speaking to that generation. We want Hingham to be competitive compared to Coas, Sitwood Wells, how do we position ourselves from a policy perspective, to make Hingham to be the great place that it is and attractive to people?
You're right, Greg. And so, then to that end, in the master plan, then we should, we should have, that there should be a focus on increased public transportation to that, to that corridor. You're right.
Well, we're a study of it.
You've got to bring it back all the time when we work with the master plan.
I think we've looked at trying to connect the downtown to South Hingham by public transportation. On multiple occasions, and it just doesn't make financial sense. I think that just getting within Hingham by public transportation probably should be a lesser priority than getting to, you know, to jobs in Boston from Hingham by public transportation. Start with that and see where you go.
But to your point, if our goal is to bring thousands of new jobs to South Shore Park, that now becomes a new driver, how are you going to get people, how are people going to get there?
Right. Well, then maybe that's a mixed-use area at some point, you know, maybe just get them to live right there.
One of the things that works very well in Cambridge is these little shuttles. You know, it's a little 10-person shuttle, maybe 15, and it's not a lot, not a big vehicle, and it runs a lot, goes from Galleria all the way around MIT, goes over to Harvard Square, goes to North Station.
Who pays for it? Who pays for it?
It's subsidized by the institutions and the private developments, so it's, every institution has a piece of it. And so, Galleria has a part of it, MIT has a part of it, and it's, and it's, it's a contract service, it's bid every year, so, and there's four or five companies that actually provide it, but it's a direct local, something like a bus or something, that kind of a thing, and it's targeted as to the destination points, but very few stops. But if you, if you need to get to a point that's longer than a convenient walk, you could walk, it'd take you half an hour, but if you, and it's not on the red line, it's perfect. And it, it runs a lot, it's every 12 minutes. And, and the buses aren't full all the time, you know, it's not like a bus, it's like an airport.
Do you pay?
Typically, if you have a pass within the institution, it covers you, or if you're in a, if you're going to the Galleria, they pay, you know, it's a kind of, it's a subsidized service.
I think, I mean... I think, given the fact it's 10 o'clock, I think we should...
See, I think we're timed, we're done.
Good discussion.
Do you have anything?
No. Well, you know, we wanted your input, so do you guys have any closing thoughts on anything? I mean, you guys gave us a lot of good, good info tonight.
I think it was well-covered.
Only that, I guess I would, I would thank everyone who is listening at home and, and everyone who came tonight. Certainly, our master plan for the town is, is vitally important as we move forward. And there's a forum that you all are hosting on...
The 22nd, yeah. So, I would encourage people to come to the forum, or offer comments through email to our Director of Community Planning, but get, you know, offer some input, and anything people want to say, we want to hear, so...
Right. If they liked or didn't like anything we had to say tonight, anyone, do we have any?
I thought you did a good job, Sue.
Bill?
Sue, you did a great job.
I think we all, I think, I think we had a great thoughtful discussion, and just glad to see where everybody was. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.